Roll call? Here.
Deputy Mayor Lowry.
Here.
Councilmember Feller.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Please join me for the invocation, if we could all stand, thank you so much. All right, please bow our heads. Father, we come before you to say thank you. Thank you for the privilege, the blessing, the honor it is to reside here in the city of Oceanside. We come together tonight as a diverse community, a community of different backgrounds, different beliefs, different presence and different futures, yet one common goal, and that is the betterment of the city. We come together tonight to seek your guidance, wisdom, and discernment during the deliberations that transpire this evening, and in doing so, we lift up Mayor Weiss, Deputy Mayor Lowry, Councilmember Sanchez, Councilmember Kern, and Councilmember Feller. Will you grant them wisdom and guidance and strength as they lead our city into a bright and prosperous future? We say all these things in your precious name. Amen. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Right hand over your heart, flag over here. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to have Lisa from the Humane Society come down with Arbor.
Thank you so much. Hello, everyone. This is Arbor. Arbor came to us as a stray. He's approximately, we kind of figured about 10 years old. He is such a great little boy. I was walking him around outside, and he walks on a really loose leash. He's just like right beside you. He's so well behaved on leash. He's mellow, but he still has enough energy to go for some pretty good walks. We have waived his fees for adoption at the Humane Society because he is considered a hospice adoption. He has a pretty loud heart murmur. So basically, his heart has to work a little bit harder to do its job. Through radiographs and that, his heart is mildly enlarged, and he doesn't seem to have any other medical conditions that we have found that would aggravate that. So hopefully, somebody will just fall in love with him, and he'll make a great little companion. Like I said, he's mellow, he's great on leash, he's just a really good little boy. Also, I'd like to remind everybody that, you know, and you can find him on our website too, at the San Diego Humane Society, and that's sdhumane.org. And there's a lot of other pets on there, and you could visit our Humane Society website, even if you're not looking for a pet to adopt. I just want to remind folks that we're a resource for many other things, for programs and services, like vaccination and microchip clinics, Project Wildlife, military support. We also have resources for people that are having maybe issues with their pets, dog articles, cat articles. They just talk about behaviors and ways that you could manage those behaviors. We have dog training classes, or even help rehoming a pet if you find that you need to rehome your pet, and you would like to do that yourself. You know, we have help on there regarding that. Also, opportunities, including employment, volunteering. You can also find information on how you could, if you would like to support the San Diego Humane Society. We have information on there about different fundraising events and ways that you can help. Day of giving is coming up. That's on June 29th, I believe it is. I might be wrong on that. Might be the 28th. But we're still, we are already participating in that and doing some fundraising, so if that's something that someone would like to get involved in, it's a day of celebration and support for lifesaving work that the San Diego Humane Society does. Thank you so much.
At this point, I'd like to have Amanda and her staff and team come forward for National Water Safety Month. We won't let you drown.
So May is National Drowning Prevention Month, and at the Aquatic Centers, we want to prevent drowning. It is still the leading cause of death for children ages one to five, so we promote that through swimming lessons. And our swimming lesson registration will begin on May 19th at 8:00 a.m., online or at the Brook Street Swim Center. In person, if you have not been in our program before, you can come to our Family Recreation Swim from 1:30 to 3:30 on Saturday, and we can help you get put in the correct class.
Well, thank you very much.
Items 5 through 17, 18, and then 19 through 20, but first we'll have the closed session report from the city attorney.
Okay. The city council met in closed session earlier this afternoon to discuss item one on the agenda, conference with labor negotiator involving the status of negotiations with the Oceanside Firefighters Association and the management employees of the city of Oceanside. There is no action under the Brown Act to report on item one. There were two real property matters. The first was item 2A involving the City Operations Center at 4927 Oceanside Boulevard, negotiating parties city of Oceanside and K O C T. Under negotiations are price and terms for the lease of the real property. Item 2B was a conference with real property negotiator involving the portion of El Corazon, APN 16208251. The negotiating parties are the city of Oceanside and Sterling Development. Under negotiation are price and terms for the sale of the real property. The council did meet on both item 2A and 2B, but there's no action under the Brown Act to report. Finally, under item three, the council actually did not meet, so no meeting on item three.
On the consent calendar, we will have a separate vote on the Baldurama Park portion of item 18.
Correct.
Deputy Mayor Lowry.
Move approval for ballots.
Item number 18 is being pulled. Also, just for your note, item number 21 has been pulled for discussion by the public. So the balance will be 5 through 17, part of 18, and then 19 through 20.
We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0, reflecting the change in item number 18. Now we'll have the second vote on item number 18 without Baldurama Park.
I'm of approval. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-0, Sanchez abstain. Now, item number 21 is adoption of resolution approving the newly created bylaws for the Citizen Investment Oversight Committee. Public speaker on this, Jimmy Knott.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherri Lane. I read this whole excellent piece put together by our city treasurer, Dr. Tricky, and there was one thing that was missing in it that was unclear, and that is, how would citizens, if they want to be on that investment oversight committee, let the city treasurer know that they want to be on that committee? It does very darken to that document. So that's what my question is, is how would a citizen make it known? Thank you.
No further public on this item.
Councilmember Kern.
I want to move approval, and to answer Mr. Knott's question, I think it would be just like any other commission, you would submit your request or your application to the clerk's office, and instead of forwarding it to the mayor, they would forward it to the treasurer. Am I correct, Dr. Tricky?
Yes, you could also contact me directly, and I welcome the feedback, and I welcome any inquiries, any people, any citizens interested in being members. We would love to have you apply, but that would be the process, yes.
Great, thank you. So move approval.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. There's not a whole lot of guidance as to how these five people will be picked, and I don't know if five is the best number that we could have. Certainly, I think that now that we have districts, perhaps try to shoot for one per district. Certainly, diversity might be important as well, you know, make sure that we have businesses, make sure that we have residences, you know, diversity in terms of the population and consistency of the population, the voters of Oceanside. So there's not, there's nothing in here, so I would like to perhaps ask that we get perhaps, you know, some guidelines, maybe separately, brought forward to try to shoot for representation on this very, very important, excuse me, committee.
I embrace those suggestions. In fact, we share the interest in diversity. The investment policy that we operate under to create the CIOC says a minimum of five citizens. My goal has been to have seven, and initially, council approved seven. We had one member resign, and I'm looking for a new member right now, and diversity on that body is very, very important to me personally, and I would embrace your suggestion that we put together separate guidelines. I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, great. Was there a special reason why it went from seven to five?
Nothing.
Because to have a quorum, it would be three?
For a five-member body, the quorum is three. In fact, that's what we looked at recently. We currently have a six-member body, so quorum is four. My goal is to have at least a seven-member body, to have more voices and more diversity on the body.
I would ask that we consider changing this to seven versus five.
Councilmember Feller.
Maker of the motion, would consider doing that or not?
First of all, I don't think we need to do districts for this as opposed to every other committee or commission, so, and these are unique people that need to understand investment for sure, so if it's five, I mean, we're a group of five, and we're doing probably a lot more than that goes on. I don't think we need seven here either, so I would be opposed to mandating seven. If the treasurer chose to move it that way, I would be agreeable to it.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Councilmember Kern.
Well, I already made the motion. I'm waiting for a second, but I have a question of the city attorney. The makeup of the body, is that even agendized tonight, or can we discuss that?
Yeah, part of the bylaws includes the composition of the membership, so that's in section 2.1, so if you want to discuss it, you can. So I understand it right now, it's no less than five. That's how it's written, and the treasurer's goal is to have seven, if I understand correctly.
Right, so we don't need to write seven in, and these are treasurer appointments with council confirmation, so whoever he appoints to council has an opportunity to weigh in on his nominees. So I think we'll just leave it the way it is, and hopefully, he can work towards getting up to seven or nine or whatever he feels like in the future. So I'm not going to change the motion, I just move approval.
I'll second.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Yeah, just another argument for having seven and asking the treasurer to truly look at that and come back with seven, or I guess it's allowed up to seven, so hopefully, we'll have seven, is that, yeah, the council is directly elected by the voters of Oceanside, and these members are not going to be, yet we're asking them to, we're asking the voters to trust in their oversight, so I think that having it seven gives more of a, representation gives more of a better fuzzy feeling, I guess, by the public, so transparency.
Deputy Mayor Lowry. I have a question for the treasurer. Thank you.
I'm sorry, sir.
Are there, you said that there are six, but one person has resigned.
One of the, you approved seven people last year, and one of the seven that was approved recently resigned, so I'm seeking to fill that seat, but currently, we're still in compliance with the investment policy because the investment policy requires no fewer than five. We have six currently, and I hope to be bringing out another nomination to you this summer, at some point late summer, to fill it up to seven. So my goal has been seven all along.
And you had seven.
And I had seven.
It's just that the one person resigned, so are we talking about changing something? Or we're not talking about changing anything? You just want to fill the seat?
No, I just, because we're now a Brown Act body, or perceived to be a Brown Act body, I thought to bring us in compliance with the other city commissions and committees, we should have structured bylaws approved by the council.
Great. Thank you.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Next item is certification of the sufficiency of the petition for the initiative measure amending the land use element of the Oceanside General Plan to require voter approval of proposals to change the land use designation or zoning or agricultural or open space land to any other use. An action to either adopt the measure without alteration or adopt the accompanying resolutions to place the measure before the voters at the election on November 6, 2018. I'll step up to the podium real quick. Honorable mayor, city council, this is a report to certify the sufficiency of the petition for the initiative measure amending the land use element of the Oceanside General Plan to require voter approval of proposals to change the land use designation or zoning of agricultural or open space land to any other use, and city council action to either adopt the measure without alteration or adopt the accompanying resolutions to place the measure before the voters at the election on November 6, 2018. Staff recommends that the city council do either of the following. One, receive, file, and accept the certificate of sufficiency of initiative petition. Two, review options and provide direction to staff on how the council would like to proceed with A, adopting the ordinance without alteration, B, submitting the ordinance without alteration to the voters. One, adopt a resolution calling an election, adopt a resolution requesting the registrar voter services for a November 6, 2018 general municipal election. Three, adopt a resolution authorizing written arguments, rebuttal arguments, and directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis. Or, thank you, Jimmy. Oh, thank you. Or order a report on the initiative to be presented to the city council within 30 days from tonight's presentation of the certificate of sufficiency. Staff does not recommend obtaining a report due to the time constraints. There are only 15 working days from 5:09 to 5:31 to meet the 6:06 agenda timeline. If you have any questions, myself or my assistant, Vida Pavelas, will be there, and I want to send a special gratitude to my staff for all the work they've done on this item. Thank you so much.
Is there public on this item?
Yes. So we have 11 speakers on this item so far. I will call you two at a time. You can line up at both podiums to start. First speaker is Dennis Martnik, followed by Jimmy Knott.
Mayor, members of the council, staff has presented options for your response to the successful petition of the Oceanside SOAR initiative. Option one is to adopt the ordinance. This is the best option. Over 15% of registered voters signed the petition, a very high percentage showing strong community support. The voters we engaged with were overwhelmingly in support of SOAR. Our community cares about preserving our open space and agricultural lands and opposes sprawl development that causes traffic congestion and air pollution and would cost us all millions of dollars for water, sewer, roadways, and police and fire service. Dense development in areas without infrastructure also creates a safety hazard for the entire community. We saw this with the Lilic fire, which required some people more than two hours to evacuate. Options two and three are to submit the ordinance to the voters. If you decide to submit the ordinance to the voters instead of adopting, you have the option of calling a special election at a large cost to Oceanside's taxpayers or putting it on the November ballot. Oceanside SOAR supporters do not want to waste taxpayer money, so we would strongly recommend that if you do not adopt the ordinance tonight, that you place it on the November 6 ballot with a provision that no decisions to change the general plan as it relates to open space and agricultural land be made prior to the vote of the people on November 6, 2018. Option four is to order a report, then adopt the ordinance within 10 days or order an election. We oppose this option because it would impose additional costs on Oceanside's taxpayers. But if you decide on option four, we request adequate opportunity to participate in the process that will show that SOAR will yield significant benefits to Oceanside citizens. Please choose option one and adopt the ordinance. Thank you. Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherri Lane. Let's look at potential origins and how this came about, and also who supported this. I, for one, support the intent of this because the council here and previous councils, if you look at it, variances have been given. They've been given over and over and over again on lands that have been committed for certain plans. That has set an attitude in the public, not by them, but by this council and other councils for using the land that had plans. I have been on committees that have helped shape those plans. I have attended many different committees that did put those plans together, but they were not listened to. So you get to a point of critical mass. That's what happened here. What other choice did you leave the public with? Very little. There was a time that both sides could have come to some amenable solution between both those pro-growth and those who want to preserve open space, but you see, they see what you have done and previous councils have done, whittling away. That stick is just about gone because it has been whittled away so much. So please, consider that on who this rests, not on the backs of those who signed the petitions, but on the decision makers. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Scott Ashton and Michelle Keeler.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. My name is Scott Ashton, CEO of the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on this issue this evening. As you know, the chamber has stood in opposition to the anti-business SOAR initiative from early on. We believe that this initiative is an attack on private property rights and the economic vitality of our city. With the unknown financial impacts to the city of Oceanside, we ask that you do not adopt the ordinance, but instead, we request that the city staff, with the help of outside consultants, prepare a 30-day study on the economic impacts of SOAR so that our community will have true insight as to what they are voting on in November. Thank you for your time and consideration.
My name is Michelle Keeler, 734 Wilshire Road. I have to agree with what Scott just said. It's an attack of a landowner's rights, which we are a large farmer in that area. We don't feel that SOAR does anything to protect agriculture, and we believe that many of the signatures that were gathered were led to believe that it does. If you look at the South Morrow Hills area, that map right there shows dots of where existing homes on 2.5 acre estates is. The white area is commercial agriculture, which people refer to as "our farms." We find that interesting because if we want it to be "our farms," then you all can buy the land from us and do what you want with it. We actually have businesses on there, mortgages, and responsibilities. We don't tell you what to do with your land, please don't tell us what to do with ours. What SOAR actually does is not preserve any agriculture. It's not creative. It actually locks in estate living, and that is essentially what SOAR protects in South Morrow Hills, and any change from that would require a vote of the people. Every dot on there is a house on two and a half acres. SOAR is not creative to protect agriculture, nor is it creative to allow act tourism or any other opportunities. We are disappointed that it's going to be on the ballot, but we have nothing to say about that. We do recommend strongly that you do take the 30 days and look at the study and see how this is going to affect the citizens of Oceanside. I appreciate your time and your efforts. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Neil Nagata and Eric Larson.
Honorable mayor and city council members, thank you for allowing me time to speak. I'm Neil Nagata, third-generation farmer and third-generation Oceanside resident. I'm currently serving as the president of the San Diego County Farm Bureau. We have lived and farmed in Oceanside since the 1930s. I am concerned about the impact the SOAR initiative will have on the city of Oceanside. What I have read about the impact of the SOAR Ventura has had on the economy of Ventura will be of great concern to the city and the residents of Oceanside. The reports from Ventura is that the city and the counties are suffering negative, from the negative impact of their SOAR. We need to be able to continue growth and change where necessary. This will allow the city to increase its commitments to the police and fire departments where we need to have these vital services. Because of the impact of the fires last year and the possibilities of the new cannabis regulations, we will need growth in these departments. Without the ability to grow and change, this area and the city will not be economically viable. This is why I'm opposed to the Oceanside SOAR initiative. SOAR will damage our ability to farm and to make necessary changes to the South Morrow Hills and the agricultural land in Oceanside. SOAR will damage our ability to make agricultural tourism work or change what we need to in order to stay in business. We are looking at creating a vision plan for the area that will be stopped as well. I have heard many complaints about the cost and traffic that will be caused if SOAR does not pass, but it is just the opposite. If SOAR were to pass, will have severe impact on city revenues, increase costs into each taxpayer. I'm requesting that the city council approve the 30-day study to understand the true financial impacts that the initiative will have in the city and the residents of Oceanside. Although SOAR suggests that it helps agriculture, I'm here to state that SOAR will only harm agriculture, agricultural tourism, the city of Oceanside, and those have worked for many generations. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm Eric Larson, Executive Director of the San Diego County Farm Bureau. Tonight, you've heard two comments. One said there's 15 working days to do this, that's not enough time, and that there will be additional costs to the citizens of the city of Oceanside. I think you need to set both of those comments aside. You're talking about an issue that's going to be on the ballot measure that's going to affect farming in San Diego County, not just for 10 years, not just for 20 years, but beyond the life of every single person in this room, and to spend a few extra dollars and to spend those 15 days, the heavy lifting has to be done. I think Michelle Keeler's map was very, very telling. It showed you what will happen in the long term. Sure, there may be some things on the front burner right now that have people concerned, but if you look at the long term, and that entire area is developed into two and a half acre lots, that has not preserved farming. You need to understand, it's really clear. If you want to preserve farming, you have two tasks, the land and the farmer. If you have not preserved the farmer and the enterprise of farming, you have accomplished nothing. Also, without a study, people need to understand that you are giving away some possible great tools for preserving farming that have been very successful in California and throughout the US, ideas such as clustering and development of transfer rights. Those things actually do preserve farmland, and those are not in this petition at all. So I stand here and ask you that you go ahead, do the heavy lifting, order the report on the initiative in the 30 days. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Jamie Thompson and Nina Hammond.
Hello, my name is Jamie Thompson. You know, we're in this situation because, you know, all of us, as people, come up here and speak before you, and unfortunately, many times, the people don't listen, and then it becomes three people to make a vote and say, "Okay, that's what the whole city wants." And we come up here and we say, "This is what we want." So now it becomes a vote amongst the whole city that gets on a ballot. And, you know, that's unfortunate that that's what it's come down to. And, you know, we had to go through a petition and get it on, and now it's on a ballot because people didn't listen, and that's the situation now. And he mentioned about the farming and this and that. Well, yes, the only way to preserve the farm is to lock in the farm. Otherwise, the farmer's going to sell it off to a developer, and it's no longer a farm. And it's just going to get bulldozed over, and now it's a building, and it's going to become a further fire issue. You know, that two-lane road now needs to become a six-lane road, and it's a bigger fire issue. Nobody can get in and out. And now it becomes an eight-lane road because it's so overbuilt that, you know, you can't get anywhere. And no longer is it a farming area because this person said, "Well, it's our right to be a farmer," this and that. Well, it was his right to sell it to a developer. Well, we all came to an agreement and said, "We want this to be a farmland in here." Well, there's no diversity anymore. Once we do that, we sold it off to developers, you know. So that's why we're in this situation, because three people decided that we want to build this whole area. And so that's why we're here. So, you know, we need to listen to the people now it's on a ballot. So, thank you.
Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, I'd like to thank you for your time. My name is Nania Hammond, and I'm here tonight to respectfully request the 30-day study. I wanted to bring to your attention the impacts of SOAR on the city from a fiscal and also from a planning perspective. Some of the best examples of the fiscal impact on a local economy are SOAR Ventura County and Prop S in Escondido. In Ventura, they have seen their county's economy shrink. 2014 to 2016 represent the slowest period of growth of any three consecutive years, worse even than the financial crisis or the Great Recession in Ventura. A large biotech firm, Amgen, which is similar to Oceanside's Genentech, relocated more than 15,000 jobs to Florida specifically because of the cost of living in Ventura due to SOAR. Ventura is described as currently in the wake of lost economic opportunity. In Escondido, Prop S was passed in 1998, which limited suburban growth, and as a result, the city had to take their housing update to a vote of the people. To satisfy their RENA requirement, they put the bulk of their housing in their downtown district, similar to coastal Oceanside. This corridor is now zoned 75 to 100 dwelling units per acre, 10-story buildings. Here in Oceanside, as you know, you have a state-mandated obligation to provide housing. The housing element that was produced in 2013 and extends through 2020. This analysis determined that the city needed to provide 6,210 housing units distributed upon income categories over this eight-year period. So the question is, how have we done? Permit research shows that you've issued just shy of 800 permits across all income categories. That includes multifamily and single-family permits, and that's through the end of 2017. We estimate an additional 135 permits have been issued this year, which would bring you to roughly 935 permits. With three years remaining and five years under your belt, you've gotten to roughly 15% of the goal. So how will SOAR impact the duration of this plan and the plan that is required to be updated by the state in 2020? It should be noted that state law requires that any portion of the housing need from the previous planning period would be carried over into the next planning period. So I respectfully ask that you request an independent 30-day report and call for an analysis of the following questions. What are the near- and long-term fiscal impacts of SOAR on the local economy? What impact would SOAR have on the city's ability to meet its fair share housing obligation? How can the city meet its economic goal of encouraging commercial growth in the city and increasing employment opportunities if the commercially-zoned land would need to be rezoned to meet the city's fair share of housing obligations? And where is the residentially-zoned vacant land available in the city to meet the city's fair share housing obligation? Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Gil Miltonberger and Sheila Kada.
Hello, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Gil Miltonberger. I live at 3660 Merced Drive. Been an Oceanside resident for 18 years. Over this time, I have seen the city of Oceanside make great strides in making it a better place to live and work. I'm very concerned how this SOAR ballot measure will affect the city economically and its future. During the signature gathering period, I was approached by my retired neighbor who came up to me and said, "Hey, was telling me about this ballot measure." And he told me how the farmers wanted it. He told me how it would save farming. He said it would save the parks and open space. I questioned him about the articles that I had read, where I'd read that the farm bureau was against it, the city, that the Chamber of Commerce didn't think it was good for it, and also the individual farmers thought it was bad. And he had no answer to that. My fear is that people that were signing the ballot measure to put it forth today were signing it because they're given bad and incorrect information. I mean, you can say, "Sign this. You like blue skies. You like clean water. Sign this." People would sign it. Come November, the voters of Oceanside need to know what the future potential effects are of this major, far-reaching ballot measure. From my reading of the measure, I could see possible negative facts. One is, will the city have to take their new general plan, when they update it, to the vote of the people? Because if you change anything in those sections, you might have to take it to the vote of the people. Also, I could potentially see that there's more litigation cost to the city, because now you've entered this new layer of having votes go through and property rights and things like that. Any changes to open space could trigger a vote, a small change. What if you want to do something on a piece of property that the city has as open space? Does that go to the vote of the people? Farming is evolving, and things will change in the future. Any small change will require a vote of the people. Oceanside needs to stay economically sound. To pay for such things is police and fire, maintain the roads, and grow. And the voters of Oceanside need to know what negative effects SOARs could have on them. I urge the council to have an independent study done in the next 30 days so we know what we're voting for in November. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Victor Roy, followed by Sheila Kada.
Good evening, Council. Victor Roy, Rancho San Luis Rey, Oceanside. On behalf of SOAR and the 11,000 signatures that were verified by the county registrar of voters, I urge you to go ahead and pass the ordinance, save all the time and money and the expense that we would be moving forward if it goes into an election. Do we need a $20,000 study over the next 30 days? I don't think so. So I urge you to do that. If we don't preserve open space now, then when? And our open space includes not only all the agricultural lands that we have left in Oceanside, which are considered prime under federal standards for growing food in the cases of major emergencies. We do want to keep that, but it also includes golf courses and our parks. So again, I say, go ahead and adopt the ordinance. Thank you.
Sheila Kada?
Sheila Kada, 1092 Greenway Road. I support and I hope you will adopt the initiative. I know when I was out getting signatures, I had many people that signed it and gave me a lot of information, much more than I had or knew about. So the people that were signing the initiative with me really knew the subject and had lots of information. And I live in Arrowood. And also Ventura, they renewed the SOAR initiative for a second time. So if it was so bad in Ventura, why did the people of Ventura renew it? I think that they like it. I think it's working, and I think we need to have the people's voices heard and vote on this matter. So I hope you will approve it. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Mike Milano, Sr., followed by Jane Marshall.
Good evening. I'm Mike Milano, Sr. I live at 462 Wilshire. My family is a farmer in South Morrow Hills, and I am saddened that my neighbors, such as Dennis, are using this system to take away our property values and to deny my heirs their rightful ownership and use of their property. I believe that it's an elitist position, and I believe that it is very bad for Oceanside. It's very bad for the people in Oceanside, and it's very bad for my family. So I would very strongly urge that you don't approve this and that you do the financial study, okay? And one last thing I want to say is that this initiative was not put together to help the people of Oceanside. It was put together so that the elitist families that live on Upper Sleeping Indian and Upper Wilshire can isolate themselves from the rest of the city. That's the objective. Dennis made the statement about the traffic on North River Road. One of the reasons we have the traffic on the North River Road is that Dennis has been at the forefront of resisting improvements on North River Road that would have alleviated that problem. And now he's coming in here and saying that that's a reason for approving SOAR. I just can't buy that, and I'm very sad about what has happened here. My father and my relatives came from Italy 100 years ago to get away from this, okay? And it's coming back to haunt us now. And it's going to happen, if it happens, it's going to happen over my dead body because I am not going to give up my property rights. And I have offered to Dennis to buy my farm if he doesn't want it to be developed, and they have refused to even consider that. So that, I appreciate your time, and thank you. And I'm sorry that I upset about this because I really am.
Good evening, Council. Jane Marshall, I live in Oceanside, 92056. I just thought it was important to maybe clarify some of the statements that were made up here. First of all, my understanding is SOAR doesn't cost the city anything. Really, it saves money from infrastructure costs and other things that need to happen in order to make this happen. And when I'm involved in the signature collecting, which is mostly volunteers, there were a few paid people, but they allowed people and actually encouraged people to read the actual initiative. So it wasn't made-up stuff about, "Oh, this is going to save water, and this is going to do this, and this is going to do that." We read what was on the initiative and allowed people to make their own choices. There were some people that did, some people that didn't. I'd also like to address the concern about the housing shortage. And according to staff, in adopting the 2013 to 2020 housing element in 2013, city council made the following finding, that the housing site inventory, a component of the updated housing element, demonstrate that the city has adequate land resources under appropriate zoning to accommodate its regional fair share of housing growth for the 2013-2020 planning period. I realize that 2020 is around the corner, but Sandag is going to do another study, and then allocate housing according to the cities within Sandag's purview. So just to state that we're behind and we need this, et cetera, I think is misleading. In addition, personally, I don't want to tell anybody what to do with their property, nor does any of the other people that I know with SOAR, yet at the same time, I'm a house owner. I can't just make a convenience store because the zoning is the way the zoning is. I have to comply with the rules. And I guess I grew up where if you don't like what's going on, you work to change the rules. Don't just keep trying to amend and amend this variance, that CUP, this conditional use, all this stuff. Change the rules by which we play the game, and everyone will be better, more happy. And this is the result, as Jimmy Knott said, of just a deterioration of the trust. So I urge you to adopt. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Dana Corso and Erin Moore.
Good evening, Mayor Weiss and Council. My name is Dana Corso, and I live in Jeffries Ranch, and I'm the President of ACTION, which stands for the Alliance of Citizens to Improve Oceanside Neighborhoods. On behalf of ACTION, the board, and all of our members, we support SOAR. We, the citizens of Oceanside, want responsible development. We saw firsthand during the recent Lilac Fires, the gridlock, when many of our neighborhoods had to evacuate in this critical, had to evacuate. It is critical that we take into consideration our safety and the safety of our children and animals. People will do whatever it takes to save their families and pets, while we would hope that our elected and appointed officials would strive to put us, the community, and taxpayers first. That is not always the case. The Save Open Space and Agricultural Resource Initiative gives us, the citizens of Oceanside, the right to vote on changes made to our general plan. The housing element, the circulation element, the recreational trails element, the safety element, and the environmental resource element. I think we can all agree that the traffic congestion is horrible. SOAR will result in less congestion, creating smart growth. SOAR encourages ag tourism, which will make farming more sustainable. Oceanside is one of few areas in the world where our climate allows for crops to be grown year-round. We need to protect our farming. We need to protect our open space and our parks, not just for us, but for future generations. In addition to the 14,000 signatures received from voters, I would like to bring attention to all the community endorsements that were also, I don't know if anybody else has shown this already, but there's been a ton of support. There you go. From a lot of community organizations. And I had a couple other pictures I wanted to show, too, of the severity of the fires. Forty-six horses that died. This gentleman almost lost his arms and, you know, third-degree burns to save his animals. This morning, I took pictures out of the backyard of my property, which puts up to the 76, and this is the traffic this morning at 8 o'clock. But it was bumper to bumper, all the way up to College, and it goes back up to Vista Way in this picture. So the fires came right up, you know, behind my house. That's a picture of it. So with all due respect, I think that it's very important that this council puts the people first, our neighborhoods first. We want this initiative on the ballot. There's no reason to study it. The people that signed the initiative should have read what they were reading, but it was all black and white and everything. We're not trying to undermine anybody. This is the best thing that Oceanside has seen in a long time. Thank you.
Good job, Dana.
Hello. My name is Erin Moore. I live at 1241 Shamboard Court. Also, I am one of the family members that owns farmland out in South Morrow Hills. I own one of the largest avocado groves in South Morrow Hills. My family's been farming for over 40 years, and we, when we first started our property, we had several other properties around the area that we actually had. We had a small nursery business, and that was about 25 acres. And my dad sold, my dad, when the business went down, he sold it. And now we've got other businesses that are very interested into looking in the South Morrow Hills to bring, to bring in. And I've been through every ag tourism meeting. I've met with a lot of wineries, a lot of businesses that have expectations for wineries, breweries, spirits now. We have a zone. We have a business zoning law now, and I- And I think what we need to do is to relook at how are we going to bring and survive business here? We have the housing stock in hand. We know what we're doing for the future of that. My dad was a big implement in developing Southmore Hills. He gave a lot of people an opportunity to grow and to start their business besides just Milano and Singh and Nagata. We support small businesses and I think what we really need to figure out, and I agree, we have a traffic issue when, when the fires broke out. Of course, that's gonna happen. But when we're, when we're bringing in the big developers into our area, that changes the bigger picture. Because we're looking at the cost effective of implementing on, on all that stuff. You think the developer's gonna pay for some of that? No. I mean, yes, they'll pay a chunk, but guess where the rest of it comes out of? Our tax dollar. And it's even more expensive. So I don't know about you, but my family supports SOAR. I would really, really think about this. Because you're letting the big, the big developers go in there and they're making these homes that are not even worth its weight in gold. Just go buy, just go by the mission and look what they've developed. Because that's gonna be what we're looking at in the future. So we seriously gotta take a look at this. And also, Weiss, you better start working with the developer. You better start working with your department on the cap.
Please wrap it up, your time's over.
Our next two speakers are Mary Ellen Reese and Daniel Dominguez.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Uh, I had no intention of speaking on this, so it's not gonna be very professional.
Mary Ellen.
Okay. Um, anyway, I just want to correct the impression left about the state laws that have been passed to increase housing. The state has no interest. As a matter of fact, they went out of their way in the laws to say they did not want to do anything to make development of agricultural land into residential. Um, you can't even do that and get the bypass, um, fast, fast action plan that they, that they implemented. They don't want sprawl. What they want is infill near public transportation used to create new housing. So Morel Hills, that's not what the state laws are all about. Um, also, the development out there would be for more houses. Residents use city services and they don't fully pay for them. You need businesses that subsidize services. Packing in ever more residents, it's just, I mean, we did that in the boom leading up to the crash. Um, and then now it looks like we're doing the same thing again. Um, developers, when they put in these residential things, do they put in, do they pay for the sewer systems? Do they pay for the new roads and the rest of the infrastructure that is necessary to support residences when the land before was agricultural? I don't think they do. I think we do. And as far as, um, taking property rights away from people, I don't, I don't think we've, I've ever heard that we have a right to have zone changes after we buy. If you buy farmland, you don't want to farm anymore, sell it to somebody who does. Thank you.
esteemed council members, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, my name is Daniel Dominguez. I am a Oceanside resident since 1988. I live on Las Tunas Drive in Morel Hills. Um, well, I can understand the plight of the farmers. I, I grew up on a dairy farm, uh, when I was young and, but the SOAR initiative is not about taking their farmland or, uh, taking their rights to do what they want with their farmland. The SOAR initiative is about maintaining the current zoning, uh, rules that exist now. Um, you know, I believe, I'm a firm believer in democracy and I've, I've heard that all these bad things are gonna happen, but, uh, what SOAR does, it gives the citizens of Oceanside the opportunity to have a say in what happens in their community. And as I said, I do not see how democracy and the vote of the people is a bad thing. Um, the, um, the other thing I heard was that, you know, it's an elitist proposal. I went out and I helped collect signatures. Uh, the 11,000 or 14,000 signatures did not come out of that one area in Morel Hills. I was, went throughout the city and collected signatures from people. And what I heard from people is that, uh, they were concerned about the, uh, uncontrolled development in Oceanside and they did not, the example they used was they did not want to emulate Temecula, where, you know, it's traffic, uh, uh, uncontrolled strip malls. They wanted to have a right to what happens in Oceanside. So I support that, urge the council to support or to adopt the measure.
Kim Murray. And for anyone else who would like to have a seat, there are 16 chairs in the lobby if anyone else needs to find a seat out there. And there's a television, uh, projection out there as well.
Good evening. My name is Kim Murray. Uh, my husband George and I, we own Beach House Winery. We are the, um, I believe the only agritourism business in Southmore Hills. Uh, we met with the city back in 2007 and actually put our winery and vineyard into business in 2010. So I've been a resident of Oceanside since 1991, um, and I've seen a lot of changes. So, uh, I'm also co-leader with Louise Bama in cheering our agritourism initiative for over three years, long before Integral, before SOAR, uh, in a way to preserve our agricultural area out there and allowing for farmers to make money in order for them to keep farming their land. And that's what we started. So here's where we're at today. We have SOAR, um, I'm requesting with, that the city attorney do the impartial analysis and in that 30 days clarify some, uh, 4.3, 4.4, where the, it's a gray area and up to interpretation on what agritourism activities can happen out there. Currently, there is some specificity stated in the zoning language right now. So we have farmers or, uh, business owners, farmers, landowners in our area that have spent tens to hundreds of thousands of dollars planting coffee. Five years ago, you wouldn't even think coffee would be grown in California. So we have these folks growing coffee with the intentions of doing a coffee roasting facility and a coffee tasting room. Currently, coffee is not in the zoning language. If SOAR's adopted today, or even in November, we have no changes to the zoning language, those folks cannot do their business without going to the vote of the people. That's my interpretation. So I don't believe that farmers and residents in Southmore Hills who have spent years doing something, that they should be required to go to the vote of the people to go put a coffee tasting room. So I would like, in the next 30 days, as part of the impartial analysis, to have clarity on what can and cannot be done in Southmore Hills. Because to me, it's ambiguous and there's a big gray area. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Jim Jenkins.
Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, Jim Jenkins, 1429, Kaia Marbella. Once again, we've heard a lot of things here today. A lot of people went out, spent a lot of time, energy and effort to collect the signatures necessary to have this thing put on a ballot. No such thing, no consideration regarding additional studies. It's just straight up. People should have the right to vote on significant changes of this facet. Zoning out there at 2.5 acres has been going on, it's been there for 40 years. And I don't think that no three people should be able to change that and change what these people have had and have been, have been acclimated to. So therefore, I hope you take it into serious consideration, not to do the additional studies, let the people decide. They've signed it, they knew what they were signing and it's very important. So once again, stop the rezoning. Let's leave it the way it is. Two and a half acres, 40 years. Thank you.
Cindy Rocco had placed the incorrect item number on her slip, so it's her turn to speak.
My apologies, Honorable Mayor, Council. Um, right here, I'd like to, uh, say that of course I do support SOAR. I do want to preserve our open space and our agricultural resources for the future. And I'd like to, if there needs to be a study, that's fine, but, um, if you're not able to pass the ordinance today, let it go to the vote of the people. And in the trend of the world today, I think most people are going, this will pass if it goes to the ballot. And I just had a couple, just two quick items. One of them is, I know that, uh, Munia had, I just destroyed her name, I'm sorry, um, that we need to meet our RENA quota, but right now, we already have 6,200 locations identified in the city as smart growth areas for that allocation, meeting that number. And Morel Hills is not one of them. It's not in the trend, it's not a smart growth, uh, area. And I understand, I know that you're, you, you know, it's an important role trying to balance, um, private use and public use. And you're facing the challenges with, um, writing zones and codes to, to balance all of those needs. But, um, the ag land is, is a critical element right now as a part of our climate action plan that's being written. And basically, when developers come in and do huge developments, they typically have to go and buy, I don't know if that was transfer rights that somebody had brought up, but, you know, you need to go out and buy land somewhere else to preserve an open space for the open space that you just took. So it doesn't make any, it's oxymoronic to take what you existently have as ag land and then go and buy that, buy that right, um, somewhere else. And then the other thing, final thing is, property rights are exclusive right to use their resources as they see fit. And I can respect that. But as Jane had said, on my house, I'm an R1 coastal zone and I guess I probably would be able to get approved for a hotel on my R1 since I'm four blocks from the beach. But is there zoning codes in there? Why, why do we have? I'd be able to borrow more money and, and make a lot of money from my heirs if I had a, uh, TOT tax generating property, but I don't. I have, I bought the property and I need to respect those codes and rules going in. Thank you.
No further public on this item.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight and for speaking. I know that this is, uh, a very, very critical issue for the citizens of Oceanside. And as a council member who has been, um, dealing with this issue since I became a council member in 2000, uh, I guess to give it, we, we got elected and sworn in December, so I guess starting 2001. This didn't just start with, um, with a project and concerns about what this means in terms of losing agricultural lands. This started, uh, back then, back even before I was on the council. And, uh, it's about zoning. It's about agricultural lands that have been zoned agricultural since the beginning of the, the city of Oceanside. The city of Oceanside was, um, established in 1888. So when this land was, uh, bought, and I, and I did ask, um, Mr. Milano Senior, uh, when you bought it, Mr. Milano, was it zoned this way that if you, um, you know, decided, you and your family decided not to farm, um, that you could then, you have the right, the absolute right, um, to, uh, to, for a Plan B, uh, be able to do two and a half acre lots? Whether you can build on them questionable, you know, questions, right? That, that's another, um, another obstacle, or not another obstacle, another challenge. Because there is no water hookups. There is no sewer hookups. It's all well water. It's all septic in Southmore Hills. So there's no, uh, roads, there's no services, there's no police, there's no fire. These are very, very, very expensive services that can, that never get paid by residential. So agricultural, how important is this for Oceanside? I want to first, I want to, um, go out and, um, and say, I want to thank all the farmers who have been farming in Oceanside and have been so profitable both to themselves and their families and to the city of Oceanside. You have produced so much and fed so many people and provided so many flowers to, you know, California and beyond. And, and what I had hoped to do was to see what we can do as a city to partner with the farmers, to continue farming. That's where agritourism started. The idea of, of getting recycled water out there, because the biggest issues, of course, are employment, um, water and, you know, what to do, what, what else we can do to ensure economic viability of these farms. There have been some suggestions about doing these kind of mega, you know, projects, um, in the middle of, uh, you know, no development, um, and they have not really proceeded. So all of a sudden now, we're looking at a project that perhaps, you know, not, and I'm, I don't really want to talk too much about that project, but what it would mean to the rest of the citizens of Oceanside. And for me, it would change it completely. The staff has consistently been opposed to changing the zoning. And somebody said, um, there is no constitutional right to a zone change once you've bought property. There is no constitutional right to it. If it makes sense to the citizens of Oceanside to, uh, you know, to, to ensure the economic and environmental viability of the city, yes. But what we're looking at right now are violations, are changes to the, to our general plan that, that are not consistent, not consistent. We have no public transportation out there. Somehow it's gonna have to somehow, you know, materialize. And to what cost? Who's gonna pay that cost? Uh, we have no water, as I said, water sewer hookups, uh, police, fire, the most expensive services. We don't have any stations out there. To do even affordable housing out there is, 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 you know, turning it upside down because of the fact that there are no services and no public transportation. You know, how can we justify a bus route when we have other needs for bus routes out in the middle of nowhere? You know, it, this is, this is, these are the challenges to our community. And in terms of our housing needs, our plans already incorporate the goals and already outline how those can be obtained. And it does not include the agricultural lands at Southmore Hills. Again, this is a very, very, um, critical, critical issue. Um, I believe that SOAR is necessary at this time because three, just three council members can change zoning, just like that. Three. Out of 176,000 people, 177,000 people, three people. I believe that agritourism can be done under the, uh, SOAR. That's what it's for. My understanding also is that it's been very successful in other jurisdictions, which is why it's been voted, um, extended in Ventura and also in Santa Barbara and other places. This is not something new. And do we need this? I do believe we do. I think that we continue to have a discussion with our farmers to try to help ensure that it is, it becomes, it continues to be economically viable. it is, it continues to be economically viable. I, I would make a motion to adopt it tonight, but I don't think I would have a second. So I do feel that we need to put this on the ballot. So my motion would be to put it on the ballot. I, I do believe that, I think Mr. Martinick made a good, made a, made a good suggestion that while this council can put the item on a ballot as early as July, it would be very expensive. So we should put it on November, but we should not, we should be very transparent about this, and we should not approve anything until the people have spoken. Because I believe that the citizens of Oceanside, the voters of Oceanside need to speak on this issue. Do they want to deal with this kind of congestion that will be created? Because there are no roads. There's one way in, one way out. How can we, you know, how, are we really going to, you know, allow, have citizens agree to this on college, on mission, on 76, on El Camino Real? It's all going to affect all of those roads. The residents need to be able to speak on this. So I make a motion that we put this on the ballot for November. Thank you.
Councilmember Kern.
I don't hear a second for that motion. Is that correct?
Not as of yet.
Okay.
Peter.
Well, it's going to be on the ballot in November, but I'm going to ask that we order report for the issue to be presented to the city council in 30 days of tonight's presentation for the certificate of sufficiency. And the reason I'm doing that is that we hear a lot from both sides. And actually, I don't know what the truth is. You know, the truth here is almost like trying to find a virgin in a maternity ward. The idea that's just all over the map here. So I, I'm trying to figure this out. So I think everybody here on that 30 days, because the one thing that was really brought up tonight that really kind of struck home with me, I'm opposed to ballot box zoning. And one of the reasons we do that, and Mrs. Murray brought that up, is the unintended consequences of ballot box zoning. So we need to know what those consequences will be, so, and we need that report to tell us what that will be. So the idea that I, I moved that we put it on the November ballot, but we actually get the report to come back in 30 days.
Prior to a second, we made just one comment on that, Councilmember Kern. Could you also include in your motion that we receive, file, and accept the certificate of sufficiency from the San Diego County Register?
Yeah, every, all the, all the legal stuff, let the city attorney say that, and go ahead.
Thank you. Mr.
So I did hear you say to put it on for November as part of that motion, but actually, you'd be doing that when, if you're going to do a report, you'd be putting it on at the meeting when we bring the report to you.
Right.
So all those resolutions, assuming there's support for that, would be before you on June 6th?
Yep.
6th or 5th? 6th?
6th. Is that the deadline?
Councilmember Feller.
If we go beyond that, it's automatically on the ballot.
Do you need a second?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second.
You understood, and we'll have the clerk reread the motion before we go, but yeah, I need a second for my motion.
So, you know, I, I would say that we are a healthy city and, but, but we're still not a Carlsbad because we've had slow growth initiatives come along every 20 or 30 years and we're still suffering because of that. I think we've made some great changes in what's happened in Oceanside in the last 15, 20 years. And, and the problem with slowing down the growth is you get roads closed, you, you don't have the development of infrastructure that's needed. The agritourism needs, needs the water in, as, that, that's the purpose of agriculture uses out there. They need the water, the recycled water. We, we were well on our way on a plan to, to approve that and that got rejected. The problem is it's taken property rights away from people that have farmed for a lot longer than many people have been alive. Some of them have been here 60, 70 years and, and have spent a lot of blood and sweat operating their, their businesses for, for agricultural uses. This is wrong in so many ways to, to even have this SOAR initiative. It is, again, ballot box planning, just as Jerry just said. And, and to say that it's not going to cost the citizens any money is, that's completely false because every time you have an election over an issue is going to cost the city money. Every single time, there will, there will be money spent to put an issue on the ballot. Eighty-five percent of the, the voters that didn't sign the petition really have no idea or skin in the game. You're probably talking about 15% that probably are zealous about preserving open space, but many of the people that are preserving open space haven't been here very long either. And, and many of them don't, aren't even property owners. There's a lot of voters that are renters that, 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 that changes the whole perspective for me. This really will create slow growth and I think that, I agree that we should try to figure out what this is going to ultimately mean financially for us, if it's the best thing that we can, we can do. I think it, it just, it just seems wrong that you're taking away a property's use, even the Gilligans, who's, he was one of the great, great operators in South Morro Hills. I, I think he'd be a little sad if he was having those rights taken away from him if he was still here. So anyway, I appreciate the time, but that's how I feel.
Deputy Mayor Lowry.
The city really doesn't have a choice here. The initiative process has been done, the signatures have been filed and verified, and we're going to do an election in November. Meanwhile, we have questions and that's why Councilmember Kern made the motion so that we could find out what the costs are and what the impacts will be. And there's no way to find that out. As you heard, there were 20 speakers and you had about 20 different opinions. So we need to have some fact and some data to look at and we will, the city staff will deal with that and the city attorney will make sure that it's put together and correct. So I am going to support this. I saw, I was glad to hear one of the speakers who was involved with the SOAR initiative say that they did have some paid signature gatherers because a friend of mine actually took a video of one of them lying about me saying that Councilmember Lowry supported this and that's why we're out here collecting signatures and that, wow, that was a surprise to me. I, I called the person who sent it to me and said, is that, is that what they said? Well, you saw the video. So it's like, okay. So they were saying anything they could say to get this signature gathered because the people who were being paid were being paid eight bucks an hour, I mean, eight bucks a signature, or $10 or $12, whatever the rate is. So I appreciate that that person sent me that video of the signature gatherer blatantly lying, and that's why I think we need to go through and follow all of the research, get all of the facts, and then everyone can be informed about how they're going to vote in November. So that's all I have to say about this. Thank you.
I have a question for the city manager. Is the, how, are you equipped or how would we go about getting that report?
Honorable mayor, council members, in anticipation of this issue coming up today, we had contacted approximately 16 different firms to see if we could find some proposers on this short timeframe and we're anticipating getting perhaps as many as four proposals. We have one in hand, so we will do it with a third party.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. I just want to address the issue of property owners because most Oceanside residents will be impacted. And most property owners will be impacted. So it's not just the property rights of one or two farmers. It's the property rights of everyone. We have rules, we have laws, we have a general plan, and people buy their properties based on those rules. It's like a bright line. Okay, I want to buy in South Morro Hills because I know that those are, you know, minimum two and a half acre lots and this is, the general plan, that's what it says. People invested in South Morro Hills. People invested in other areas in Oceanside because they knew they were not going to have these huge traffic congestion issues, that Temecula, that Orange County, you know, that all these other places have. We have a general plan that has worked, that continues to work for us. And actually, this is worse than ballot box planning when you have three council members who can change a general plan that has worked and that will then thereafter not work for the majority of the residents of Oceanside. So property rights belong to everyone. Thank you.
Councilmember Feller.
Thank you. I just want to make a point that three council members have closed down access to freeways and roads going through as well. So that's, that's not ballot box planning, but that is exactly what's happened. So, you know, it goes both ways.
Please vote.
So is this coming back on a certain day? It's June 6th? Is that part of the motion?
Yeah, it was to accept and file the certificate of sufficiency as stated by the city clerk and to order the report pursuant to Election Code Section 9212. That statute identifies what has to be addressed in the report, and then we would bring it back to you on June 6th, along with the resolutions to call the election for November.
And statutorily, what does that report require?
It requires an analysis of the fiscal impact of the measure, its effect on the internal inconsistent, I'm sorry, the internal consistency of the city's general and specific plans, including the housing element, its effect on the use of land, the impact on the availability and location of housing, the ability of the city to meet its regional housing needs, its impact on infrastructure or funding for infrastructure, its impact on the community's ability to attack and attract and retain business and employment, its impact on the uses of vacant parcels of land, its impact on agricultural lands, open space, traffic congestion, existing business districts and developed areas designated for revitalization. Some of these are probably easily answered, but, and any other matters the legislative body requests to be in the report. So I haven't heard any specific additional factors beyond those that I just read, so it would, it would include at least those that I discussed.
Okay.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
I have been asked to take a short break, so we will reconvene at 6:30 for the public hearing items.